All right, good evening. So I'll call to order this December 10th, 2019, regular meeting of the Powhatan County School Board. Madam Clerk, if you'll let the minutes reflect that all members of the School Board are present this evening along with Dr. Jones and with our student liaison, Ms. Timberlake. We'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. I would ask Mr. Conca to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Cole if he would lead us in the invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the full prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunities you've always afforded us, especially for this season of the year. We ask that you inspire us, take time off to think about the real meaning of the season and to spend quality time here with us. Bless us in our decision-making, in our making of our bread.
Amen.
Thank you. That takes us to the approval of the draft agenda for the evening. Do any members have changes necessary to the draft agenda for the December 10th, 2019 meeting? If not, is there a motion to approve the draft agenda?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion, a second to approve the draft agenda. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Draft agenda is approved. Motion carries five to zero. Takes us to the approval of the minutes. This is the approval of the minutes from our School Board workshop and meeting on November 12th. Do any members have comment or question regarding the minutes as presented this evening?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes from the workshop and meeting of November 12th.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the minutes? Please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved, five to zero. Next item is a review of the bills and receipts. So any questions or comment regarding the bills and receipts? Any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, that takes us to our first public comment period of the meeting. In accordance with School Board policies, BDDH and KD and any resident of Powhatan County may address the Board during public comment. At this time, citizens are invited to address the Board. When it is your turn to speak, please come to the podium and wait to be recognized by the Chair. Each individual will have three minutes and delegations will have five minutes to provide their comments. Please respect this time limitation so others may address the Board. A maximum of 30 minutes will be designated for public comment this evening. Please address your comments to the Board as a whole, not individual Board members, the audience or staff, and please begin by stating your name. The Board requests that all speakers maintain an environment that promotes listening and respect. The Board will not respond or address issues raised by speakers during the course of public comment, and speakers are reminded that the Board Chair is authorized to stop or remove any speaker who uses vulgar, disruptive, or threatening language. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines is greatly appreciated. Public comment period is open. All right, once again, public comment period is open. All right, seeing no movement, I'll bring public comment period to a close. And Dr. Jones, I believe we have several recognitions this evening.
We do. We have some student and staff recognitions this evening, so if the Board will join me on the floor and if members, be honest, if you could please stay throughout the duration of the recognitions, and then if you need to leave after the recognitions, you're more than free to do so. Thank you.
Tonight, we're going to recognize the Powhatan Middle School soccer team. They are 2019 Southside Middle School champions. I'd like to ask the coaches, Will Miles and Jessica Minix, if they'd come forward and help us with the recognition. The Powhatan Middle School soccer team continued their 11-year dynastic run during the 2019 season by capturing another Southside Middle School Conference Championship. The Indians finished their season with a record of 16, 0, and 2, and had a goal differential of 60-plus over their opponents. The players continued to live up to their high-character standards all season and played their game as one unit until the final whistle blew in the championship game. Congratulations to the team. The following students are being recognized. Please come forward as I call your name. Connor Bates, Chase Connolly, Cole Donnelly, Braden Elsie, Connor Gravett, Jace Hammersley, Madeline Ickes, Zach Gnesi, Ally McGill, Austin Mosley, Keenan Miminovic, Evan Sargent, Caleb Shust, Logan Thompson, Brandon Valant, Pierce Van Del, Addison Wallace, Shane Whitlock, Sally Woodard, and managers Quentin Booker Jr., Samantha Martin, Luke McNeil, and Blake Congratulations. I'd like to ask our coaches to come forward to help with the recognitions, Gene Wood and Justin Watts. The Powhatan Middle School cross-country team had its most outstanding season to date. The boys' team took first place at the Collegiate Relay Race, second place at the prestigious Milestat Invitational Meet in Mechanicsville, and third place at the Fork Union Invitational Meet. The last meet of the season at the Collegiate Invitational not only brought home first place for our boys' and girls' teams, but Kyle Marsh displayed an act of sportsmanship that left spectators, his fellow runners, and coaches in absolute awe and admiration. These athletes not only have natural athletic abilities, but more importantly, have outstanding character and heart. Congratulations to the team. The following members are being recognized at this time. Please come forward as I call your name. Chase Bab, Addison Benj, Luca Blevins, Aleah Burnett, Summer Campbell, Madeline Dunaway, Olivia Goodrich, Ella Green, Giovanni Cesariz Hernandez, River Lanes, Dylan Mapes, Kyle Marsh, Ryland Powers, Caitlin Riesmeyer, Sean Seibel, Sally Smarchen, Coleman Smith, Eli Timmons, Ian Timmons, Elizabeth Fallon, Easton Weber, and Elizabeth Wymer. Congratulations. to the School Board. We would like to recognize Mr. Conca for his service to the Powhatan County School Board. Mr. Conca served on the Board for eight years, from February 2011 to December 2019. We appreciate his service to the citizens of his community in District 2 and for his leadership and commitment to serve with the members of the Powhatan County School Board. He's being presented with a plaque that says, "We honor your service to education. By word and deed, your presence has enriched the lives of students and served as an example for all."
If you're here for the recognitions, you'd like to leave, now would be the time to leave. You're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting if you choose to do so. Thank you. One day, somebody's going to take me up on that.
Yeah, absolutely. No, absolutely. They are, that's right.
He actually served nine years because he came on early when...
Were your days gone?
It was nine years.
He came on when Jason Moore left to run for Board of Supervisors.
But that was in February. He started in February.
It was, I had to run the special election in February and then in the general election. It was a partial year.
I didn't remember that either. He told me.
They'll check his days.
He's one of those partial year people that had to run twice within a year.
They do the same thing.
Huh? Oh, yeah.
All right. So that takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Dr. Jones, would you like to walk us through the consent agenda, sir?
Yes, sir. The consent agenda, as presented, includes the monthly financial report, CIP financial report, our use of our facilities report, facilities updates, donation. Donation is some tools and materials to the electricity program. We have some overnight field trips, one for the wrestling team and one for the swim team at PHS, and then personnel docket and addendum that was discussed during the workshop at 5:00 PM.
All right, do any members have questions about the consent agenda?
I have a question.
Mrs. Ayers.
Just about the field trips, and I mean, I don't see, like, they're overnight field trips, but I don't see where it's, there's anywhere that they stay.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they sleep.
They stay in hotels.
Okay, so it's just not included on the, okay.
No, I mean, we could provide that information.
No, it's okay. I just, I just...
It's really just pulled from the...
I thought that it used to because I thought I remembered thinking that they, you know, the cost and everything, but I, and it's fine. No, I don't want it on there. It's just fine. I just thought it was, kind of amused me that they didn't have anywhere to stay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, other questions or comments?
I make a motion, we accept the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda in a block. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's reports. Dr. Jones.
Thank you. First item is for the Board to consider approval of a lease agreement for the Pocahontas Landmark Center Gymnasium Building. The Board will recall that the county Parks and Recs program is going to be administering that building and managing that building. We looked at a couple of different options. One would be to have two separate buildings, but because we have one physical address, we couldn't divide the property. The property also, the two properties also share HVAC units and would be very difficult. So we executed an MOU that the Board approved last year, and this lease agreement is a continuation of that information that was requested or specified in the MOU, but also requested to be done by VACOR, our insurance company, which manages both our property and the county's property. So this lease agreement was done at their request to further delineate ownership of the buildings if there's ever a need for our insurance company to get involved. So that's the genesis of the lease agreement. It's been approved by the Board of Supervisors, and we're looking for approval now from the School Board so that we can begin that agreement and move forward.
All right, questions or comments, discussion from the Board regarding this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cole.
I've talked to Dr. Jones a little bit about this. It's fairly extensive and I guess a fairly standard lease, but a couple of things in it concern me. Number one is on 2A, the term of the lease is 20 years. It's no secret that it's been by the position and Board's position that we, as a School Board, want to make sure that all of our dollars are spent on behalf of students, and I'm not concerned that with a lease this long, that our motivation to somehow figure out what we're going to do with the rest of Powhatan, Pocahontas, this site is going to be, we're not going to be as motivated to do it. We're going to, we basically are going to own everything here, which means at some point, somewhere, we are going to be responsible for taking care of it and maintaining it. I'm not sure that's a good use of School Board dollars, to be quite frank with you, but I'm not sure what the solution is. So I'm concerned about that. I'm also a little concerned about the liability statements in there, and I would, you know, after talking to Dr. Jones and he stated a minute ago, VACOR initiated this lease, I would like for VACOR to review this lease and make sure that it's, that it's what they want. I'm not sure who wrote it. I assume the county attorney wrote it, but I would, I would like, for my peace of mind, I'd like for VACOR to look through it and make sure it is what they want. I'm one Board member, but I'm hesitant at this point, having seen this for the first time last Friday, to be ready to vote on it.
All right, Dr. Jones, do you want to respond to that and, or comments?
The only other comment I would add is that, you know, this was sent over to us by the county. I believe the county attorney's office did prepare the lease. We did have input on that lease, but we have not had, even though VACOR asked for it, they have not specifically reviewed the lease. So I don't think that's a bad suggestion from Mr. Cole, and I don't believe, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, this isn't a time-sensitive matter, so if we wanted to wait till January to give us time to check with VACOR and have them review it, certainly willing to do that if that's the Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Emel, one, just, I believe Ms. Ayers had a question earlier, and then we'll go back to you. Ms. Ayers.
I, oh, I did. I had some of the same concerns that Mr. Cole had because I'm also thinking that there are other county-supported, the Christmas Mother is also in this building, so are we going to do the same thing with the area that they're in? Or, I mean, how, that's just my question, how, the same thing Mr. Cole had said. And the other question I had was, had our attorneys reviewed this lease agreement?
Typically, we do not have documents that are prepared by the county attorney, reviewed by our attorney, because they're, while they're representing the county, we're also part of the county.
Right.
So there are documents that we ask the county attorney to review for us and prepare for us.
Same, too.
We didn't do that. We're happy to do that if that's the Board's pleasure as well.
I don't know. It's up to the Board.
All right, so Ms. Emel, you have a comment?
Well, I, I, I think that I understand all that, and I think we need to wait and have this as an agenda item with our first meeting with the Board of Supervisors because there have been some Board of Supervisors, new ones, that have said different plans for the building, and I don't think they know everything about the building yet, but I would suggest that we do the background as Mr. Cole and Mrs. Ayers have said, but also to put it on the agenda and to see when we could talk with them in January or February to see if some of our concerns could be alleviated with that meeting.
So this lease is only for the, only for the, what is, what was the gymnasium structure? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Because the other thing is, is if we, if no one's going to use the other buildings, areas, then we need to talk about, we can always use space for more fields if nobody else is going to refurbish the other, and they do need some refurb, refurbishing.
All right, so one of the questions or one of the topics a moment ago was the Christmas Mother. It's my, and it's my understanding, we also have an agreement of some kind with them presently.
We have an MOU with them. We don't have a formal lease with them.
Right.
Because they're not paying us for that as a nonprofit. It's just a MOU.
It's a use agreement, right. Okay. This is a much different type of agreement as Mr. Cole was speaking to and Ms. Emel as well. I, I think I feel the same with several of the other Board members. I think it probably would be prudent to get it approved, get it reviewed by VACOR prior to us acting opponent. I have no problem in discussing it jointly with the Board of Supervisors if, you know, if that's, if that's appropriate or necessary. So would it be possible to, we'll just, if there's a motion, we'll take this by for the day, or we'll just take it up at our January meeting? Any other comments, Mr. Cole?
I'll be glad to make a motion to table it until January, and I'm perfectly, you know, VACOR since they initiated this conversation, if, I'm okay if they're okay with it. I just would like someone else to kind of represent their interests on this side of it, you know. I know the county attorney represents all of us, but at the same time, I just, like I say, having seen this for the first time, I'm, I'd just like somebody else to give me their opinion before I jump in and say yes or agree to this.
Right, and from my perspective, I certainly want to be a good partner with the county. That's not at all what this is about, but I'm not an attorney, and this is a very legal kind of document. I just think it would be appropriate to get some advice from VACOR or review, and this, this is not going to impede them in any way. They already occupy the building. They've been in the building for a while.
No.
It won't cost them any extra dollars. It's not going to do anything that's going to impact how they use the structure. Is that right?
I can't answer. They're not in the building yet. They haven't begun working on the building yet.
They're not waiting for this to do that, are they?
They're not waiting for this. They still have some renovations and work that they need to do.
Dr. Tibbs, would you like to come forward, sir? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. The MOU that we signed with them in June gave us a year to get a lease in place, so we still have a considerable amount of time before that expires. And they're, so they're, they're not waiting on this to do anything. What they've been waiting on is the finish of the roof, which is almost, pretty much done.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, and so we have plenty of time to work through this document.
Yes.
Take a look at it and thoughtfully consider it.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, other, other questions or comments? All right, so we'll try to put it on the agenda for our January meeting if that is possible, and then at that point, we can get feedback from the, whatever that recommendation or advice is, and then we can talk about what we do with it at that point.
Yep.
Okay, whether that's a joint meeting or whether it's just act upon it and move forward.
Absolutely.
When I brought up about the Board of Supervisors, I meant to say, as in, what are we going to do, not necessarily them seeing the lease because they've already seen it, but what are we going to do? Yeah, because like Mr. Cole said, if we just give them the gym, then what are we going to do with the rest of the bill? We need to make a decision and we need to know who's responsible for, before 20 years is up.
Right, and Ms. Emel, I feel it just as you do, I just, and to me, I agree with you, we need to make some decisions about the remainder of the structure.
Uh-huh.
What we do with it, what we use it for as a county, make sure we're putting it to good use and good purposes, and I think that's a very important discussion to have in a joint meeting or in some fashion, so I agree with you.
Well, did you mean that, Mr. Cole, that the, if it's okay with our attorneys and our insurance company, you want to just go ahead and then we'll do the rest? Okay, so it's two separate?
Yeah, unless the Board feels differently, I think, well, what I am suggesting is that we simply, if there's a motion, we, we bring, Dr. Jones brings us back, whatever feedback we get from the attorney, from the review, I'm sure it'll be fine. We'll have that to, to work with. We'll either make a decision to move forward based on this, or I guess we could decide to put it back to the county in some kind of a joint meeting, but that'll give us the information to make a good decision. That's all that I'm suggesting. Is that generally agreeable with everyone? Okay. Or is there a motion to act upon? Board acts upon a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Cole.
I'm going to make a motion to table it until January. That's my motion.
Should we say later since it's the holidays?
Dr. Jones, the motion is to table it until January. I'd like to, I'd like to act upon it by January if we can. I don't want to delay the county, and I think, I mean, if their attorney has looked at it, I suspect we're going to hear back that it's fine, but I, but I think it's important to get it reviewed. So we have a motion, is there, you make a counter motion if you'd like to, I suppose, Ms. Emel, a secondary motion.
I'm fine.
Okay.
I just didn't know if that would be enough time with the holidays, but if he thinks there is, then fine.
All right, so we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, so this is table for the evening. We'll take it back up in January. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next item is the recommending the School Board approve the request for release from compulsory attendance, student case number RE-192002, based on religious belief.
All right, so is there a motion regarding this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion in student case RE-19-2002 that we grant the request.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next item, Dr. Jones.
Thank you. Next item is, this is approval of the transfer of ownership of 2320 Skaggs Road, the old School Board office, to the county. There's a resolution attached that needs to be approved. This resolution was prepared by the county attorney's office. It was reviewed by our attorney. Stacy Haney did sign off on it, and we are looking for approval of that resolution so that they can begin work on Skaggs Road, move in the free clinic over there, and some of the, is for county staff.
All right, is there a discussion or a motion regarding this, and we do have a resolution and the deed as well?
And the deed, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Emel.
The resolution, the third, third sentence, just a minor change, but it says that we've built a new facility, and since we really haven't done that, we just say, we've moved...
Renovated.
Or we're renovated facility. Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Or has occupied a new facility?
There you go. Occupied a new facility. Or renovated, no, occupied a renovated facility.
All right, so we need a motion to... So we need a motion to amend the resolution.
All right. I make a motion.
Do you want to read it from this, how you'd like it to appear? If that's easier, I'm sorry.
Okay. Whereas the school board has moved to a renovated, oh geez.
Just moved.
Has moved to a renovated facility. You got that, Ms. Takeday? Okay. That's my motion. In the resolution.
All right. Restate it one more time.
Okay. Whereas the school board has moved to a renovated facility and no longer needs the above referenced property and desires to give it to Powhatan County for its use. Is my motion. Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. So discussion regarding the motion. Can we simply say whereas the school board no longer needs the above referenced property?
Sure, we could. I'll.
So I'll offer that as a substitute motion. Whereas the school board no longer needs the above referenced property, because I'm not sure how to state that directly.
I'll second your.
Substitute motion.
Substitute.
All right. So we have a substitute motion and a second, and I'll try to state this. Whereas the school board no longer needs the above referenced property and desires to give it to Powhatan County for its use. So we will be striking the words has built a new facility and. So that's a substitute motion. All in favor of the substitute motion, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the amended resolution.
All right. We have a motion to approve the amended resolution. We'll act on the deed on a second motion. So all in favor of, I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second to approve the amended resolution. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. The amended resolution passes five zero. So you want to get a new copy of that done? And let's take just a moment and I don't think there's anything we'd need to change in here. Okay. So that language doesn't appear in the deed. All right. So discussion regarding the deed, there shouldn't be, I would think, but we need a motion to act upon this as well.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We convey the deed to Powhatan County.
All right. Motion and a second. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. All right. Next item. Consider approval of advisory committee applications. Dr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The, I believe we have one additional advisory member, Jerry Fife, on school health advisory that we need approval for this evening.
All right. Any discussion regarding this item or is there a motion to approve Mr. Fife as a new member?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Fife. Next item, Dr. Jones.
Thank you. Next item is consider approval of the budget calendar for FY 2020, 2021. This is a long session for the General Assembly. The dates are attached and the calendar has been reviewed at the previous meeting. We're happy to answer any questions the board may have.
All right. Other questions or comments for Dr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the budget calendar as presented.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, Dr. Jones.
Thank you. Next item is capital projects update for December. I'm going to ask Dr. Tibbs to come up and go through this update of our capital projects.
Welcome, Dr. Tibbs.
Thank you very much. Good evening. This is just a real quick update on our capital projects that we have, we've had going on for a while now. The two items that we're going to highlight tonight are the train performance contract and the solar PPA that we currently are working on with Sun Tribe Solar. The train performance contract, we've been deep into this project since about last February. We are nearing, nearing completion of this project. I received the substantial completion documents today for signatures and you can see the water conservation building envelope. They've been 100% complete for a while now. Major mechanical is now 100% complete. Two months ago, we had some punch list items that needed to be taken care of that has since been taken care of. Lighting upgrades is 98% complete. We've got three fixtures that need to still come in that we have been on back order for a while. And then the automation system is about 75% complete. We're expecting that to be done when we come back from winter break. The big project that we have going on at this point are the Sun Tribe solar panels that are going on four of our buildings. As you know, we have the three elementary schools and Powhatan Middle School that are receiving these Sun Tribe solar panels. And so I've got several slides with some pictures. The pictures that you see here are atop of Pocahontas Elementary School. And Pocahontas Elementary School was the first one that we started on and it will be done here within the next couple of weeks. And so what you see on this slide are two pictures of the actual panels on the roof and then the middle picture shows you the inverters that are mounted onto the side of the building near the switchgear room where all the main panels are. The inverters are what's used to convert the energy that's being consumed or produced by these solar panels into the energy that then will feed the panels and that we will use.
All right. Can I ask you, Dr. Tibbs, if I could ask you a question? And that slide is fine. So from, I guess it's Old Buckingham Road, you can see the front of the middle school and you see the yellow bars. I guess they're safety rails probably.
Certainly, yes.
All right. So do they remain in place?
No, sir.
They'll come down?
They will come down. They are just in place as an OSHA safety measure while the gentlemen and ladies are actually working on the roof. So once the projects are complete, all of the safety fencing that you see will come down.
All right. I had a constituent ask about it. I just wanted to know how to convey the answer.
Yes, no.
So once the construction or the work to the project is finished and it's functional at that point, the yellow handrails will come down?
Correct.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And you also, you can't see it from the front of the building, but if you go around the back of the building, you'll see scaffolding in the back of the building and there's perimeter fencing for safety measures as well. All of that will be taken down and you won't be able to, really, you won't be able to see anything from the highway except for at Powhatan Elementary where we have the slope roofs with the standing seam. You'll be able to actually see the panels on three of those roofs.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
This picture shows Flat Rock. Flat Rock was the last one to come onboard and so Flat Rock is moving along fairly well. I like this picture because it shows you the racking system that is installed on the roof. If you'll recall, when we first started talking about this and we first had the initial presentation, there are no penetrations to our roofs whatsoever. These racking systems are installed on top of the roof with rubber matting and various things of that nature that do not allow these racking systems to penetrate our roofs at Another picture, this is Powhatan Elementary School on the left. This is what you will be able to see if you're traveling west and east on Route 13. You'll be able to see the solar panels on the backside or the sides and the back of that building. We did not install any of the solar panels on the slope roof on the front of the building, but you will be able to see, and these are some of the folks that are working on that. The installation on the standing seam is different, of course, than it is on a flat roof because of the seams that come up in the tin and they've got special clips that hold them into place. The right side is the cabling and the wiring coming into the switchgear room. This is actually a picture of Powhatan Middle School. During this process, we have had to work, or actually Sun Tribe has had to work with Dominion Power to do shutdowns at all of our buildings on the weekends. And so we've had to shut down the power at the buildings on the weekends totally in their entirety so they can wire and put this wire into the switchgear so that when we start to produce electricity from the panels, it will then bypass the Dominion side. Another picture from Powhatan Middle School. The right side, you can see this is the safety fencing that Mr. Walters just mentioned. All of this is located throughout the perimeter of the project site on all of our roofs and all of our schools. And so again, once this is done, all of that will come down and so we won't be able to see any of that. Some more progress pictures. This is the middle school looking out from the second floor. So this school, this project has been very cool for our middle school students because as a middle school students, especially those that are upstairs, when they are going around the upper perimeter and they look out towards Powhatan Elementary, they've been able to see everything from start to finish. And I know this has provided them with some really cool learning experiences to see this and the teachers have enjoyed it as well. So from a completion status, what I did was I worked with Sun Tribe to get remaining work and anticipated completion dates. So the next two slides will show you for each school. It'll show you completion status, the remaining work, the anticipated completion of it, and then anticipated date to begin operation. What this anticipated date to begin operation means is when we will turn them on and then there will be plenty of staff on standby to commission and make sure that all the panels are producing X, Y, Z, and make sure we got everything that we've got coming to us. We will be provided, once everything comes onboard, we will be provided with web links so that we can see what each school is producing and what we are consuming and using and the CO2 benefits that we're not giving off into the environment, et cetera. So we're looking forward to those as well. And then as you can see, Powhatan Middle and Powhatan Elementary. Any questions?
All right. Very interesting. I'll answer questions. Mrs. Ayers.
Are all of these panels, I know like at the solar farms, they move to face the sun, but these are all stationary? They don't move at all?
That's correct. Our is stationary.
They're all installed to face the sun and that's how they get?
Correct. So if you're, if you're standing and looking at Powhatan Middle School, like if you're standing in the front parking lot looking at the middle school, all of those panels are twisted facing the back of the school because as the sun rises and comes around, it's going to hit those panels all day long.
Okay.
And essentially the same thing at all of our schools. The panels are oriented on the roof in correspondence to how the sun flows around the buildings, depending on how they're located.
Okay. Very exciting.
It is exciting.
Mr. Tibbs, I have to go back and show you this. Before and after.
Yes.
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 All right. Other questions or comments? I just asked Dr. Jones while you were speaking and I apologize, but I asked him if there's a way to incorporate this into our electrical CTE program at the high school in some fashion. You know, renewable energy sources, solar power is certainly a very lucrative market now for a lot of people. And if we can somehow incorporate that in the training we provide to our students, I think there'd be a lot of value to that. So I hope that that's something that we would be able to work towards.
If I could comment to that effect, one thing that Mr. Payne did do with his students last year is, you know, we built a goat barn last year, a couple of years ago at the high school. So he did work with his electricity students to install electricity in that goat barn using solar. So we, he has done that with the students. And the second thing is, one of the subcontractors that is working with Sun Tribe Solar, I was at Powhatan Elementary actually, and two of our former electricity students that went to work for Davis and Green were actually working on this project. And so it was very good to see them. They were very excited to be working at home and working at schools in which that they had come through. So that was very nice.
All right. Mr. Cole.
I did not, but they're all, they're there, so I can certainly get one.
Great picture to clean out.
Yeah.
All right. Other questions or comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the last item for the superintendent's report is an update on the course planning guide that our secondary students use. We update this every year and Dr. Mahundra has a brief summary of changes to the planning guide and the process that we'll be using moving forward.
Good evening again. As Dr. Jones noted, we do an annual review of our requests and opportunities for students from a course perspective. It's required by the state that we do this every two years, but we feel strongly that we want to make an assessment of what we need for our students each year. So this is our annual review. We do work with a variety of stakeholders as we're preparing this, administrators, school counselors, department leaders, classroom teachers, and look at student needs. We also have an instructional team, our curriculum specialists that look at these as well as our elective liaisons and our lead teachers for special education. At the division level, our directors and directors review this as well as look at any DOE changes that there may be. We do have several proposed content changes and updates for this year. English seven, we've been taking a look at different levels of opportunities for students at the middle school. We are recommending in our course guide this year that we're going to remove the honors level at the middle school. The thought behind this is that we've got students who are working towards wanting to have honors opportunities at the high school level, but need to have a solid foundation to make a clear understanding of who is going to be on that track. And by tracking students too early, we may eliminate students who will have that opportunity at the high school level. So this will promote additional opportunities for students as they go to the high school level. Also, we've got several course descriptions that we'll be updating for clarity. So you'll just see in the comments areas or the areas right below each course, some additional information. So as parents and students are making decisions in the areas of Algebra I, several of the game design courses, our cybersecurity course, which is a relatively new course, Intro to Hospitality Tourism Recreation is a new course this year, so we're just providing some updates with that, as well as the middle school band courses. We've got some prerequisites. Those are the items that students need to achieve prior to participating in certain coursework. Some updates are happening on the math side for students who are entering, excuse me, chemistry, chemistry honors and engineering explorations. In the area of CTE, the changes that we're looking at are some course changes as well as some name changes. We have a program called Power Systems to better align with what our long-term career pathway is. For that, we're introducing Introduction to Power Structural and Technical Systems. Computer Information Systems, two semester courses that we're now creating as a single year-long course. And AP Economics was offered just in the micro world and was paired with a personal finance course to meet a requirement for the econ personal finance. We have found that we have students who desire to take more significant advanced coursework in economics, so we'll now offer AP Economics as a full-year course in the area of micro and macroeconomics. And Mr. Walters, I'm not sure if you're smiling because you're concerned about who might want to take advanced economics, but I would be one of those people concerned as well. But it's good for them. Industry certifications, we're adding that in the area of medical systems. And we're also looking at offering a leadership and character course and that will be taught by our JRTC instructors from the high school who will come down and teach that as an elective sure if you're smiling because you're concerned about who might want to take advanced economics, but I would be one of those people concerned as well. But it's good for them. Industry certifications, we're adding that in the area of medical systems. And we're also looking at offering a leadership and character course, and that will be taught by our JRTC instructors from the high school, who will come down and teach that as an elective at the middle school.
Does that have the same, Dr. Mahundra, does that have the same requirements for uniform and other things that JRTC has, or is it, it does?
I'm seeing a nod from our CTE coordinator, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it is a model that we're following based on several other programs that are in the area that are offering a middle school model as a way to encourage students to participate at the high school level.
Okay, thank you.
Also, some other new electives. We've got some new formatting. We have, we've offered for many years, online health and PE nine and 10. We've actually always incorporated those into the regular description for PE nine and 10. There are enough changes or differences in that online program that we wanted to delineate that, so that will occur within the course guide for parents and students to review. We also are renaming a course, Digital Technologies, to Intro to Digital Design. We do have several new pathways in the electives area, a small engine repair class that will also have a welding II class in the agricultural fabrication that creates a completer in the area of agriculture. Design Multimedia at Level III and Level IV will continue and be a more advanced yearbook course, producing that for our community. And then we have Principles of Business and Marketing. We're moving away from single marketing coursework to something that's more comprehensive in the areas of business and marketing, and then a business management course. New courses, we've got a, we've had online offerings for many years, and we've used some outside vendors for that. We found that we did not have English offerings as electives within that coursework, and that we thought our students may enjoy some of those. So these are some new semester English electives offerings for students who might want to take an additional course in the area of English Creative Writing, World Mythology, Film and Lit, and the American Hero. Our Adaptive Physical Education Program has been highly successful, and we are going to now transition into an adaptive art program, where we'll have a buddy system with our advanced art students, who will then participate with some of our students with special education to create an adaptive art program. And then at the upper level for our art students, an AP 3D Design Studio Art, that just gives our students who are on that track for a full fine arts program to have another offering at that upper level. And then Introduction to a Digital Design Foundations Course. We do retire courses during this process as well, and we're seeing that we had low enrollment or changes in course of study that would require that. We are rolling out world languages, German I and German II. We did have a retirement of an instructor last year. We've been working with those students who are participating in German I and II to make sure that they have opportunities to complete their full complement of those courses for the Advanced Studies Diploma, but we will no longer be offering face-to-face German I and II. It is available if students want to do that in an online format. In CTE, retiring some business courses, as I mentioned, the marketing courses as singular marketing courses, we're retiring those where we've integrated business and marketing in some other areas, as well as the Digital Business Solutions Course. And in music, we had a bump in some enrollment that we needed to incorporate a seventh group music technology course to make sure we had enough electives. We will not be offering that as one of our electives for this coming year. And where we go from here with this is pretty standard, as far as our scheduling process goes. In January, we'll have an instructional showcase at the high school. In February, we'll see sixth, seventh, and eighth graders seeing their individual scheduling nights. And then in February, students will participate in the scheduling process at both the middle and the high school with their school counselors one-on-one. And then in the month of April, course verification forms will be sent home to families for them to look at what their students have requested for their schedule for the following school year when the report cards are issued.
Can I say something?
You can.
Okay, so like for the economics thing, so I know personally, a lot of people at schools, they want to take the microeconomics class with AP class. And so like, the thing is, a lot of people in the upper level classes, they don't want to take personal finance like by itself or online because it brings down your GPA compared to taking other AP classes. So I feel like it would be better to have both the original option of half year of finance and then half year of micro, and the like AP and micro, like, and the just economics class. Because like, some people want to take like both. Like, it just depends. Like, some people don't have time, they're freshmen and sophomores, to take the personal finance class on their own because they're taking a lot of other courses. Like, having the combined course really gives them an opportunity to like get the AP credit and get other like required courses out of the way.
Dr. Mahundra, would you like to respond to Ms. Timberlake's question or comment?
Making sure I'm understanding what, so you're saying it is a good thing that we're moving to the both semesters of the course?
Well, then, like, I think it'd be good to have both as an option.
Okay.
Because like, some people, they don't, like, because it's a requirement to take the finance, but otherwise, they have to take it like as an additional class instead of taking like an AP class or other class.
Yes, and so you are correct. And the only way that we can do the personal finance is to offer it in the virtual way that we do, that is combined econ and personal finance class. And it is actually going to be a prereq for that course. What I would say from a GPA perspective is, because that's a course that's required of all students, that is not weighted for anyone, it does not provide a GPA disadvantage because everybody has that requirement. So it may be considered, if you were comparing you to a student in a different school division that may have an honors option for that, but not within our, with our existing school. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just wanted to say that.
Okay. No, we, no, that's the reason we have a student liaison is for your voice.
Yeah.
So we appreciate your engagement, your question, and your comments. Thank you very much. Dr. Jones?
I'm going to ask a question, Dr. Mahundra, as well. I thought that if they took the AP Economics course, that they didn't have to take personal finance anymore.
We thought that was the case, but they have to still have the personal finance. The strands that exist within personal finance do not fully exist within the AP micro or macroeconomics course, unfortunately. Yes.
But isn't that one class, economics and personal finance?
So at the core level of the most basic requirement, as it's, as the curriculum was developed at the state, there is a course called Economics and Personal Finance. There is the ability for school divisions to create semester courses of economics as one semester and personal finance as a second semester, for a variety of reasons, licensure, the way students want to schedule it. So what we did in recent years was, for those students who wanted to take an honors level course, we paired economics with an AP micro course. And by doing that, the students did, no, personal finance with the AP microeconomics course. And so that gave students the opportunity to take an advanced-level economics class that also met the requirements of the core economics class that the state is asking. What we're doing now is we've realized that we have students who really do want to get into a significant, challenging, rigorous, full curriculum of economics, and the way to do that will be to offer AP micro and AP macro as a full-year course. But what Haley's saying is, if there were a student who did not want to do both sections of that, just wanted to do an econ for a semester and just AP micro, they can't do it that way. They're going to have to be committed to fully doing both AP micro and AP macro. Did I get to the heart of what you were saying?
Yeah.
Okay, did that answer your question?
So everybody still has to take one year of?
Basic EPF, yes.
Okay.
EPF, which is econ-personal finance.
So if you're not into that, then you would just take the basic class?
Correct. But if you really love economics, then you can take AP micro.
Okay, and that covers your requirement?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, wouldn't it?
It doesn't.
Oh, it won't anymore?
Because you've already completed it.
I have to get that before now to take the, to take the AP class.
So everybody's going to take the, like, the basic one?
Correct.
Has to take the basic, okay.
Correct.
Okay, geez.
All right, so we're having a pretty spirited discussion here. Mr. Cole?
I didn't want to comment on the online health and PE. I'm glad to see that we were standalone in course description. I had a number of parents talk to me when I was up there representing ACA, because a lot of the ACA students take that online course, about how challenging that online health and PE certification course was.
It is.
You know, I know when people look at that and say, online health and PE, it's like, what could that be? But the report back from students and parents is it's a really challenging course, and I'm glad to hear that.
Yes.
How many sections are we going to have? Don't we have some online sections in the regular school year?
We do, and it's not just for our ACA course students. It is offered to a wide variety of students. So we've got students who want to take more art classes or more band classes, and so they use this as an opportunity to clear that part out of their schedule.
It is rigorous. All right, other questions or comments?
Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Kunkka.
Just to comment, my personal opinion, the elimination of any language, German I and II is a step in the wrong direction for this or any county. I think the more you can expose kids to other cultures and other languages, the better citizens we're going to generate. And I would hope that there would be an alternative in trying to encourage more participation in the languages that have low demand.
I'm making another comment here.
This is to Ms. Timberlake.
Okay, so like, I think the reason most people don't take German and like, there's nobody taking it, is because it's not offered at the middle school. So like, if they're kind of mixed up, I guess that's on the way, or like, the exact, because nobody at the high school wants to like, start taking it like, in the next year, it's going to be like the whole high school. So it's like, starting at middle school, having all this stuff.
I agree. We need a blitzkrieg in German pushed down into the middle school.
All right, other questions or comments?
I had some.
Mrs. Emel.
Slide five, the new pathways. Now, it says small engine repair. Now, haven't we offered that? So I'm confused as to why.
I thought we had as well, but this is.
CTE coursework, yes.
Right.
We have offered small engine repair as a standalone course, but what we now have recognized is, in the area of agriculture, there are several different areas in which students are interested in doing. For example, some of them like the small engine repair and like the engine piece of it. So we've created a pathway that will allow them to be a completer in that area. Then we've also created with the welding II, we've created a pathway for them to be the metals type of individuals, so they can do welding I and welding II. So they are then a completer, and they can get certified in welding when they are done. So what this is, this is giving students an opportunity to get involved in something initially as a foundation, and then take the coursework all the way through to become completers in that area and potentially have credentials in that area as well.
Okay, so that brings me to my next question, because I've heard that we need more options for ninth and 10th graders, because a lot of that doesn't happen till 11th and 12th. So when can you take small engine repair and welding I?
You start off with that course that was on a few slides back, the Intro to Power Systems.
Oh, okay.
You start off there as that foundational course. And what that does is that gives you exposure into all of those areas, so then students can branch out, starting in their 10th grade or 11th grade year and go into the different areas.
Okay, so back to that slide, I guess, then, slide four. So what, what other ones? Like, so what do the ninth and 10th graders choose, I guess? How many do they have to choose from?
They have this one to choose from in the power systems area. Then they also have horticulture that they can choose from, or they have animal science they can choose from.
So in ninth grade or 10th grade?
In ninth grade. And I'm talking mainly in the ag area, but there are a plethora of opportunities for them across the board that they can take initial foundational coursework to then decide which way they want to go in ninth and 10th grade year.
Okay, so from what I understood, there was only for the, ninth and 10th grade was the, like, I know the food, that doesn't start till 10th grade.
Culinary arts.
Yeah, and so what, and I think medical systems, they could take that. But that's what I've heard from parents and students is that. So I'd like to, maybe you could get me a, or show me in the book, or show me on wherever, what's the choice, so I can relay that information?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And.
All right.
I'm sorry? Oh, is that Intro to Hospitality?
Yes.
Oh, so what grade can you start that?
Ninth grade.
Ninth grade. Oh, okay, so I, okay. Oh, well, oh, okay, all right.
All right.
All right, and then the other thing I heard was the drama and theater. I know we had it, and then there wasn't enough students, so we took it away during the day. Is, are there more students now or not? I mean, they do wonderful, wonderful plays. I just went to see the last one, but I just was wondering if there's enough people involved to take it during the day, or they just prefer to use other classes and still wait and do that after school?
That coursework is, still exists in our course guide, so it will be available when students request to schedule for this year, so it will be available. And if we have the number of students that we need to provide that course for students, then we will offer that course for students. But it is available. So these retirements of courses that you would see are courses that we not only don't believe that we would have, that we have, that we have not had sufficient enrollment over time, but we also believe that we have a different course of study that may meet the needs of students. As far as the drama and theater goes, we believe that while we did not have enrollment in certain off-years, that we didn't have enough enrollment, that we will continue to offer it because we believe that we could have appropriate enrollment moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I have a question about the CTE courses, and Dr. Tibbs, you or Dr. Mahundra can answer this. So I often hear from parents that they would like to see us offer additional CTE courses. And I'm seeing that we're, I'm not sure if this is four or five, but we're retiring several CTE courses for marketing, and then, and I guess the digital business solutions is being replaced by another course, is that right? All right, so these four marketing courses, are they being replaced by the previous course on slide, on page, slide five, as Principles of Business and Marketing, or are they being retired just because of low enrollment?
Correct. They are being retired because of low enrollment. They have not, we have not offered those classes in at least the past two years.
Okay.
So the interest has not been there. And quite honestly, from a marketing standpoint, and to offer a marketing program of study coursework, if we were in a Chesterfield school, we could offer more in line with that, because we have retail businesses and we have local shops and things of that nature that we could partner with, such as boutiques, clothing boutiques, and things of that nature. We don't have that here in our community. And so what we decided ultimately, the teachers and myself and the school administration, is from a business standpoint, we have two staff members there, and we had close to 17 different course offerings. So we did look back at numbers, enrollment numbers, and everything that we could over the past couple of years, and we just ultimately decided those courses were the ones that we wanted to take out and retire out of the course guide and to revamp our Principles of Business and Marketing and our Business Management, because for business, we have a lot of students that will take the ag courses and that will take the culinary arts courses, and they'll go into cosmetology, but then they'll come take a business course because they may want to be an entrepreneur at some point. So what we decided is that we wanted to offer them courses that were relevant, that they could see application across different areas if they had taken other coursework.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, other questions or comments? All right, thank you. And this is just for information? Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll bring it back in January.
All right, thank you, Dr. Mahundra. Appreciate that. Thank you, Dr. Tibbs. All right, next item on the agenda are comments. We'll start with you, Ms. Timberlake.
Okay, so the National Arts Society, they're having their induction tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. Last week in the Heights, we hosted a Santa breakfast with a whole of student volunteers. And the student volunteers' organization's on Saturday, so the children count really well. The National Arts Society raised $2,758 for charity by writing 1,379 letters to Santa and bringing them to Mason's Uncle Lee today. The Inter Science Arts Society is hosting their annual computer science brochure next Wednesday Friday in the Fiddler's Ma County. The National Arts Society is collecting books and shortens books for the Christmas event in the Salvation Army. The Winter Banding Forest concert is on Thursday night, and there'll be an in-school performance on Friday. The high school show choir received a superior rating at their assessment last week. AP Government and Practical Law fastest took a trip to the museum last week for their work on personal rights. The student council partnered with the Red Cross, hosted a school blood drive last week. And lastly, I would like to thank the school board for allowing me to attend the VSA conference for school board's student representatives. I greatly enjoyed my time at the conference and learned as a new kid to be a student.
Thank you, and thank you for your participation. We appreciate it. All right, so for our board comments, we're going to start with Mrs. Emel tonight, and we'll let Mr. Kunkka have the last word from the board.
Well, thank you, Ms. Timberlake. That was very nice, and I'm glad you had the opportunity to go. And I can see that you've already taken away things and have used it tonight. Good job. I just had a few follow-ups. I was wondering of the status of the VCU autism grant. Do we?
You know the status of that?
You don't know the status yet?
We started getting it by the end of the week.
Yep. So you are, we are doing it. Okay, so, yeah, because I understand the due date is the 16th. So, okay, thank you. Appreciate that, yeah, that it was Dr. Prince. The audio and video of our meetings, did we get that taken care of?
Yes.
So we are being, we're going to be using the audio and the video, because I had heard from a constituent that it was not up last time. So they, okay, but we're all good now?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Dr. Jones, is there?
Okay, good. And then the last thing is the MLK resolution. Did we get that signed and sent?
Thought we signed.
We were waiting for, we were waiting for Mr. Kunkka to sign. Did we, we're, so they have it now? Okay, great. All right, thank you very much. Oh, and Merry Christmas to everyone, and enjoy your vacations.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Emel. Mr. Cole?
Just a couple things, both of them, pertaining to the App Madison Regional Government School. Just for people to be informed, and the App Madison Regional Government School is looking to raise tuition by about $1,400 over three years. That will bring them closer to what Maggie Walker charges and enable them to offer a more competitive salary to their employees. I'll bring you additional information as it comes available, but just want to let you know that that's a possibility. Now, we only have, what, eight or nine students, Dr. Jones?
Yes.
So we're not, we're not talking huge impact to our budget, but just so you'll know that. The other thing is that the director down there, Dr. Albin, wants to come and visit each of the divisions that are represented at App each of the divisions that are represented at App Madison Regional Governor's School. I'd like to be able to, I'd like to extend him an invitation, if that's okay, on behalf of the board, to come when he thinks is appropriate, and we can get him on the agenda. And then lastly, I want to give Mr. Conca my regards, and my best wishes, and my thanks for him being a fellow board member for the last eight years. It's been a long, I mean, eight years, isn't it, Jim?
I count nine.
Yeah.
Those like nine.
Yep, well. But Mr. Conca has been a good board member to work with. He often brings up points that no one else on this board has thought about, and we're going to miss his insight, and miss his dedication and his passion for the school system. But we do thank him, and we wish him the best. We know he'll continue to be involved in, in public schools, and he knows where we are, so he can come public comment anytime he'd like, but the chairman does have the right to make people sit down, I just want to remind.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Thank you, Mr. Cole. All right, so my comments are brief. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday. I hope that you spend some time with your family, rest, particularly our staff, rest, take care of yourself. The school year will start right back up next year, and the kids will be excited to see you back. So take care of yourself, enjoy your holidays, thank you for what you do. Dr. Jones, I'm sorry, Mrs. Ayers, the comments are yours. And Mr. Jones, thank you for your service, sir. Don't want to miss that opportunity. Mrs. Ayers?
Okay, first of all, the same, just wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, enjoy time with your family, and get some rest, like, I think Dr. Jones and I both are. I obviously haven't been getting enough rest, but anyway, so enjoy your families and have a safe holiday. And there is a new director at, I'm the representative for Code RVA in Richmond, and there is a new director as of last week, her name is Kumie Lorinson, and so it's a female now. Whoop, whoop, I'm just kidding, no offense to men, but, I mean, the other director did a great job, and he was wonderful getting the program started, but I'm really looking forward to working with her. She's very excited about the opportunity, and I think she'll do a great job. And it was very short notice, too, so I was really pleasantly surprised that we got someone so highly qualified, so that's a very exciting news. And then to Mr. Conca, I'm going to miss him, he's been a great board member. I don't know who's going to tell me that a tablet, when I started now, was made of stone, so that's what he, that's his MO, was always teasing me about how long I've served on the board.
Scratch that off.
So, anyway, I do wish you luck, and I thank you for your service to our community that you represent, and I will miss you.
Thank you.
And I'm sure I'll find you in Heather's classroom.
So, Mr. Conca, the last comments from the board this evening are yours?
Thank you, sir. I want to thank my wife for her support and her encouragement for nine years, and, you know, she's, she's taught me about education from the point where we were together, so thirty, over 30 years, so I've been learning. I'll never get to her level of expertise, but I want to thank her first. And if you'll permit me to use first names, Kim, I want to thank you for your enthusiasm and your community involvement. Rick, I want to thank you for your expertise as an educator and your knowledge. Joe, I want to thank you for your calm demeanor and your steady leadership of the board. I think you're the perfect chairman for us. Eric, I want to thank you for your friendship and for your leadership of the school system. You're unqualified, you're my best employee.
Your only employee.
You're my only employee, okay, who's counting? And Valerie, I want to thank you for over a quarter of a century of knowledge, leading this Powhatan County School Division, and as a friend and a mentor. Valerie has taught me how to be a good school board member from, you know, she broke out her original papyrus and the scrolls, and, you know, told me the ropes, told me what to do, what not to do, and I do appreciate your guidance. My wife asks me what I'm going to miss the most, and I think it's going to be shaking hands with the graduates every year, and sending the, sending the kids off to their, their next life in college and into the working world. So I'm going to take comfort in two things. One, the school system's in good hands with the 2020 school board and with my successor, Mrs. Susan Smith, also an educator. And the second thing I'm going to take comfort in is if the board loses focus, I have up to seven minutes per month. That's my opinion, right at that podium. And I also have Ms. McFarland's phone number, which I will retain. So if I could indulge you for one more favor, I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.
Well, hold, hold your motion, we need to.
When it's time, when it's.
There you go, you have, you certainly can, sir. All right, so Dr. Jones, it's, and thank you for your comments. So it's Dr. Jones, it's your opportunity at this point.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays as well, encourage staff to get some rest and to enjoy time with family and friends. And I also want to thank Mr. Conca for his service. He's been an exemplary board member, he served as chairman and vice chair during my time here, and has been a strong advocate for both students and staff throughout my tenure here. A very creative thinker, as Mr. Cole mentions, always somebody who's thinking out of the box, which is always good to have on a team, so thank you for that, sir. Wish you the best of luck, and don't be a stranger. I don't know about seven minutes every meeting of public comment, but you're welcome to stop by anytime that you'd like and visit. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jones. All right, so that takes us to our second and final public comment period of the evening. In accordance with school board policies, BDDH and KD, any resident of Powhatan County may address the board during public comment. At this time, citizens are invited to address the board. When it's your turn to speak, please come to the podium and wait to be recognized by the chair. Each individual will have one minute, delegations will have five minutes to provide their comments. Please respect this time limitation, so others may address the board. A maximum of 30 minutes will be designated for public comment this evening. Please address your comments to the board as a whole, not to individual board members, the audience, or staff, and please begin by stating your name. The board requests that all speakers maintain an environment that promotes listening and respect. The board will not respond or address issues raised by speakers during the course of public comment, and speakers are reminded that the board chair is authorized to stop or remove any speaker who uses vulgar, disruptive, or threatening language. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines is greatly appreciated. Public comment period is open. Once again, public comment period is open. All right, seeing no movement, I'll bring the second public comment period to a close. And, Mr. Conca, that takes us to adjournment, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion from Mr. Conca, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor of adjournment, please respond with aye.
Aye.